Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for coming. I'm really excited about today and the idea that, you know, we have a lot of plans. We have a lot of hardworking people in this community to help reduce homelessness. And when I was able to meet with Dr. Savage and the U.S. Interdepartmental Agency on Homelessness in January, I thought this would be a great opportunity for us as a community to understand a brand-new federal strategic plan and to try not to be necessarily siloed, but to try to see if we could be aligned around all or parts of a plan that's taken a lot of research and a lot of time. And we're fortunate to have the expert and the person over this federal strategic plan for our community, Dr. Savage. So I wanted to let our council president and our commission chair speak quickly, and then I'll introduce Dr. Savage. But thank you, everybody, for being here.
Good morning, and thank each and every one of you for being here. I want to also thank the other elected officials that are present here today. We all know homelessness is a complex and multifaceted issue that affects countless individuals and families across the globe. It's a problem that can arise from a variety of systemic and individual factors such as poverty, lack of affordable housing, mental health issues, addiction, and more. Addressing homelessness requires a concerted effort from government officials, community organizations, and individuals alike. It must be accompanied by long-term solutions that target the underlying causes of this problem. So I want to thank Dr. Savage for coming out and sharing your experiences and what you guys are doing. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's hard to follow someone who had a prepared speech, but I don't have a prepared one. Certainly, like my two counterparts here, Dr. Joe Savage, welcome to the western gate of the Sunshine State. We're glad that you're here to give us some guidance and some help in our strategic plan to end homelessness here. Certainly want to thank the county staff and my colleagues of the Board of County Commissioners who have all been committed to providing attainable, affordable housing as well as preventing homelessness here in our community, and to our staff, and to all of our partners, our healthcare partners who are here, the COC, a homeless coalition, and all of those who provide daily services, and to our men in uniform, our sheriff department, our city police, who often are the first encounter for homelessness. We appreciate them being here a part of this strategic plan. And hopefully, today, we will recognize that homelessness is just not an isolated problem, and it's not one municipality or one individual group or church or civic organization that can solve the problem. It takes a total community working together to be able to address this systemic issue of homelessness in our community. And we're here to just listen to Dr. Savage again. Welcome, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing the Board of County Commissioners and the City Council together for one item that's important to this entire community.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And I want to reiterate before I introduce, a big thank you to county staff, to city staff, to the council, and the county commission. I think this is the symbolic nature of showing that we all know that this is something that is a priority for our community, like the Commissioner said, and really every community. This is what I meet with mayors all over the country and have. This is one of the top four issues that has spoken about in every single city in the United States. So again, very fortunate to have Dr. Savage here, and a huge thank you to everyone here and all of our committed community members that want to be part of the solution. So with that, I'll introduce Dr. Joe Savage. Joe is a recognized leader with over 15 years of experience in the fields of homelessness, social policy, economic development, and human services administration. His passion for this work has cultivated years of skills and expertise that have helped bring over $150 million of funding to support housing and services for the homeless and community development projects. Joe's commitment to this work is rooted in his belief in the dignity of human life. He has a Ph.D. in Urban Affairs and Public Policy from the University of Delaware. So with that, I introduce Dr. Joe Savage.
Good morning, everyone. How's everybody doing? Oh, a little bit more energy. How's everybody doing?
Great.
All right. And I completely understand. I usually have a disclaimer whenever I have to present this early. I am here physically, but usually mentally, I don't wake up till about 10:30, 11 o'clock. So hopefully, we will get through this intelligently, and you guys will get some understanding about what's going on at the federal level as it relates to our priorities around the issue of homelessness. Thank you, Mayor Reeves, for having me for this invitation, and certainly a big thank you to the council members, all of you being here this morning. This is actually something that I rarely see, when I see the government coming together with the community, really getting behind this type of effort and wanting to know what's going on at the federal level so that we can improve what we're doing at the local level. So I really appreciate the fact that you all are out here this morning, and you want to hear about what's going on with All In, what's happening at the federal level, and then what you all can do locally. So essentially, what I'm going to do this morning, I'm going to talk about the new federal strategic plan that we released in December of 2022. The name of the plan is called All In. And my purpose isn't to get into the details. Some of you do have a copy of the plan. If you haven't had a chance to read it, go to our website, www.usich.gov, and download a copy. That can get into the nuts and bolts of the plan, the strategies. What I want to do this morning is just give you guys the overall framework of the plan and how it's structured. And the reason why that's important, when we come out with this type of plan and we established federal priorities based on this plan, what you're going to begin to see, a lot of the funding that will come out of the federal government, whether it's out of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Department of Veterans Affairs, or Health and Human Services, in those funding requirements, in those what we call NOFOs, you're going to begin to see these priorities from this framework emphasized when it comes down to scoring. And the closer your community's plan is aligned with this federal framework and priorities at the local level, the better you will score. The better you score, the more money that will come to your community. And so it's really important that you understand what our priorities are at the federal level, and then what does that mean for you locally, and begin to have those conversations and begin to look at your system. But we'll get into more of that in just a little bit. As introduced, I'm Joe Savage. I'm a senior regional advisor with the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. USICH is the federal government's entity that's responsible for developing federal policy as it relates to homelessness. The way that we do that and kind of what you guys would want to model at the local level, we essentially coordinate 19 federal agencies around the issue of homelessness. So rather than each agency doing its own thing, operating in its own silo, we coordinate them around a common vision and a common goal for what it means to prevent and end homelessness in this country. And we do that through our council. So the secretaries of these agencies sit as members of our council, and we bring them together, and we coordinate them so that there is a coordinated effort. And it makes it easier for you all at the community level. Rather than HUD having one set of priorities, Department of Veterans Affairs having another set of priorities, and as a community, you're trying to meet this agency's priorities, that agency's priorities, we have a common goal and a common vision for what it means to prevent and end homelessness. So what I do as a senior regional advisor, I cover the mid-Atlantic and southeastern states. And essentially, what I do is I help you understand what the policy is at the federal level, and then how does that translate into implementation at the local level. So looking at your community, looking at your data, looking at your needs, how does this policy translate into programs and services? And then how can you develop your system to maximize your amount of funding? So that's what I do. So typically, average, maybe about three or four times a month, I'm meeting with a community like this. I'll go over the federal strategic plan so that you understand the priorities. And then I often come back to the community multiple times to really help you all dig in, to work with the providers, work with persons with lived experience, to understand how does this translate for our community and how does it get implemented locally. So let's talk about All In. So how did we get to developing this plan? We did a number of listening sessions throughout the country. The listening sessions involved various stakeholders, everyone from providers to law enforcement, to persons with lived experience, to local governments. And through those listening sessions, what we did was we sought to understand what communities are experiencing locally, and then what is it that they would want to see in a federal strategic plan. And in addition to doing the listening sessions, we also had an open portal on our website where anyone could go in and give their feedback and help us understand what they would like to see in a federal strategic plan. So at the end of the day, when it came down to it, we had approximately 2,500 lines of qualitative data that we analyzed and went through in developing the federal strategic plan. So we definitely made sure that it was a plan where we had community input, we had input from various stakeholders, we did input and listening sessions at national conferences because we really wanted this plan to be centered around what communities need. And one of the key things that we made sure that we did was get input from persons with lived experience. So in terms of the biggest challenges that we heard, I don't think anything on this slide is going to be a surprise to anyone in this room. The top thing being the lack of housing supply, the lack of both affordable home ownership and rental housing. That is something that is widespread across this country as the cost of developing housing skyrockets, then affordable housing also decreases. So the lack of housing supply was one of the top reasons that we heard from folks. Then, of course, rising rents. Rents are rising, and they're outpacing incomes in terms of wages. So not only is housing out of reach for those who are experiencing homelessness, but housing is becoming out of reach for even the working class, your teachers, your EMTs. And so this country really has a huge affordable housing crisis. And we really see this increase in areas that are coastal, areas that are huge vacation places that people come to. That's where we're really seeing these rising rents. And then, of course, inadequate access to supports. We know that if someone is going to be successfully housed and they're going to maintain their housing, they have to have the necessary supports. And it's not just giving them the supportive services, but those services have to be adequate to meet their need so that they can remain stably housed. And then, of course, the rise in unsheltered homelessness. This is the huge issue. This is the issue that we're often seeing in the media. This is the issue that we're seeing on the national stage, the rise in unsheltered homelessness. And the number-one issue that is causing the rise in unsheltered homelessness is the lack of affordable housing and low wages and poverty. A lot of people think the main cause of unsheltered homelessness is drug addiction. That is not the main cause. That is a cause that is lower on the list in terms of leading to homelessness. But the rise in unsheltered homelessness that we are seeing across this country has to do with the lack of affordable housing, rising rents, and there's no increase in what we will call what would be a living wage. So that unsheltered homelessness increase, and we're especially seeing that cities on the West Coast where it's really prominent. And then also the criminalization of homelessness. One of the things that we heard from communities, a lot of communities are trying to begin to pass ordinances that make it illegal to, let's say, sleep in a park or, you know, sit on a bench overnight. And so we're seeing a rise in the criminalization of homelessness. There have been a number of cases that have set a precedent regarding this, particularly Martin B. Voisey. And so we really want communities to understand that we can't criminalize homelessness and criminalize people for doing what they need to do just to survive. Because in the end, it's going to cost the system a lot more money when that person is put in jail, cycles in and out of the system, and it leads to other issues. And so the criminalization of homelessness was one of the biggest challenges that we heard from communities. And then, of course, and this is a big one for me, being in this work for over 20 years, fatigue. The people who are on the front line who are doing this work, just the fatigue that they are experiencing, the burnout that they are experiencing. And this one in particular, it was so important to us that HUD heard what was being said, and is really looking at ways that they can increase the amount of administrative dollars that come to communities through the COC program so that persons working on the front line and doing this work can have a livable wage, can really begin to do things that practice self-care, and really be able to deal with the fatigue and the trauma. And of course, this became particularly apparent during COVID and the pandemic and the initial stages, the persons who were really on the front line, really challenging and really doing the work that was necessary. So these were the biggest challenges that we heard, and then the greatest opportunities that we heard. So we had those challenges. Well, what about the opportunities? The big thing at the top of the list was the amount of unprecedented investment through such things as the CARES Act, as well as the American Rescue Plan. And the thing about these dollars and what we have been encouraging communities to do is that when you're developing your plans to use and how you're going to disseminate these dollars, you want to be as strategic, as coordinated as possible. Take these dollars and run as far as possible with them as you can, simply because these are one-time investments. Communities may not see this additional funding again. So those unprecedented investments, as well as the demonstrated commitment from the Biden-Harris administration. If you haven't had a chance yet, if you go to whitehouse.gov, you can download and search for what's called the Housing Supply Action Plan. That is the federal government's plan for how we plan to increase the amount of affordable housing in this country, both home ownership and rental. And then, of course, one of the key things that we heard from a lot of communities when it came down to the COVID-19 pandemic, communities really had to get creative in terms of their strategy. So the lessons that we learned from communities, particularly such things as the benefit of non-congregate shelter. And the big thing that I often emphasize, it's a shame that it takes a tragedy, a crisis, a pandemic for us to realize we can do things better. And even at the federal level, we gave communities a number of waivers when it came down to various federal programs. And again, the same philosophy, why does it take a crisis for us to realize at the federal government, we can make things easier for you, and it's a decision that doesn't take the entire Congress to make? And so the lessons that we learned during COVID were really important in terms of how we understand how homelessness systems operate. And then, of course, the focus on racial equity. We know that persons of color are disproportionately impacted by the issue of homelessness, and we know what has led to that disproportionate impact. This country has a history of institutional and systemic racism that has really caused a huge disparity when it comes down to income, when it comes down to wealth, when it comes down to home ownership, when it comes down to access to housing and services. And so one of the things that you're going to see in this new plan is the focus on racial equity that is embedded throughout the plan, and what communities can do to begin to look at their system, understand where those disparities exist, understand the causes, get the folks at the table, and begin to have these difficult conversations. They are difficult conversations, but they are conversations that must be had if we're really going to get to the root causes of homelessness. So communities saw one of the greatest opportunities as the focus on racial equity, and then, of course, the dedication and the commitment that they had from their staff. And so these were the greatest opportunities that we heard from our listening sessions. And our goal was to take those opportunities and take those challenges, and then look at the qualitative data and develop a plan that really speaks to the needs of communities. This slide is just showing you our progress to date. 2010 was the year we released the first federal strategic plan that was entitled Opening Doors. So when we look at the data from 2010 to 2022, which was the most recent point in time count when we released the federal strategic plan, we've seen an overall reduction over this timeframe of 33%. And so we've been making progress, and we understand what works. We understand what communities can do when they have the necessary resources. You see that uptick in chronic homelessness by 4%. These are the people who have long-term homelessness, typically tend to be unsheltered as well as living in emergency shelter or transitional housing. And we've seen that uptick primarily in the unsheltered homeless population and in the West Coast. And so that particular area has really seen an increase in unsheltered homelessness, which has driven this uptick of 4%. Family homelessness down by 36%. And the big one that I like to emphasize on this slide is that veterans' number. Veterans homelessness since 2010 is down by 55%. And the question is, why? It's because the VA put up the resources through programs like HUDVAS and the Supportive Services for Veterans and Their Families, other rental assistance programs. The VA put the resources on the table, and we have been able to make a significant reduction, even amongst unsheltered veterans. That number is down by 56%. So what does that say, and what is the message we're trying to send to Congress? When you put the resources on the table, we can get the work done. When you give us the resources, we know what works and what communities can do to get people housed. For veterans, Congress put up the resources. And one of the things that I often explain when I talk about this number is I want you all to understand something about social welfare policy in our country. If you ever studied the history of social welfare policy, social welfare policy in this country started out with this understanding of the worthy and the unworthy poor. You have people who are living in poverty, but there's the worthy poor, and there's the unworthy poor. The worthy poor are those who were poor because of circumstances beyond their control, the person who lost a spouse, the orphan who lost its parents. But then you have the unworthy poor, those who were dealing with drug addiction, those who were dealing with mental illness, even the person that may have been fleeing a domestic violent situation. The unworthy poor were viewed as being in their circumstances as a result of their moral flaw, as a result of their moral failure. So when social welfare started in this country, it was geared towards the worthy poor and not the unworthy poor. Why am I talking about this? Because that perception still exists today within our country, within our Congress. So even when it comes down to resources, think about it. Veterans, they served our country. They are the worthy poor when it comes down to homelessness. But these other subpopulations aren't considered to be the worthy poor. So we have to understand that, number one, homelessness is not the result of someone's moral failure. Poverty is not the result of someone's moral failure. We have significant systemic issues in this country when it comes down to our social safety net. We have significant issues when it comes down to income and a living wage. But when we put that aside, and we decide we want to give the resources to get people off the street and into housing, we can make significant progress. And so our argument to Congress is, guess what? If you put up the same resources that you put up for veterans, we can make the same progress with these other subpopulations. And the last one on youth homelessness, the reason why you don't see a number for that, it's very difficult to count homeless youth. They tend, they're what we call the invisible homeless. And so communities really struggled over the years when they were doing their annual point-in-time counts. How can we count homeless youth in a much better way? So in 2017, we started working with communities to come up with a better way, more efficient systems to count homeless youth. So instead of 2010, the base year for homeless youth is 2017, and so we'll be releasing some more numbers regarding homeless youth shortly. But this is our progress since the first federal strategic plan that was released in 2010. And then this is just the same information, but it's over the time period from 2020 to 2022. So if we look at the last point-in-time count that we had prior to the pandemic and compare it to the 2022 point-in-time count, you see that overall increase by 0.3%. That's primarily due to the increase that we're seeing in unsheltered homelessness, that we're seeing on the West Coast, in coastal cities as well. And then those are the two-year reductions for family homelessness, veterans homelessness, and youth homelessness. So you see for these subpopulations, we are making progress, and it can be done. And a lot of what we're seeing really has to do with communities coming together and really developing a coordinated plan and a coordinated strategy for preventing and ending homelessness. So let's talk about All In. What does All In's framework look like? And again, the reason why it's important to understand the framework as it relates to All In is because the better your community's plan is aligned with the priorities in the federal plan, the better your community will score, and the more dollars will come to your community when you apply for various funding opportunities that come out of the federal government. So the key point of All In is there is a goal that we have set, and we've set a goal to see a 25% reduction in homelessness by 2025, and that base year is 2022. So from 2022 to 2025, we set a goal for a 25% reduction in overall homelessness. What we want communities to do is develop your own ambitious goal. If your community feels 25% is something that's ambitious for us to achieve, then you can set a goal of 25%. Or you can set a goal that's higher. Some communities may set a goal that's even lower. But what we want communities to understand is take a goal, look at your data, look at your resources, and set a goal by 2025 that will be an ambitious goal for your community to achieve. So All In is centered around a 25% reduction in overall homelessness by 2025. And one of the key things with All In, prior federal strategic plans, if you've had a chance to look at them, broke the plan out by subpopulation. So there was a section on families, there was a section on youth, a section on veterans, a section on homeless individuals, a section on chronically homeless individuals. This plan does not break out by subpopulation. Instead, what this plan is, we're using what we call universal targeting. And what we mean by universal targeting is this, when we talk about that reduction by 2025, we want that to be an across-the-board reduction. However, in setting your own goal for 2025, you might look at your needs and look at your resources and decide, you know what? We can make significant progress by 2025 if we target our resources towards a certain subpopulation. If we target our resources towards families, or if we target those resources towards veterans. So we're looking at a universal reduction, but understanding that communities and looking at their local data may decide to target a particular subpopulation. So we really want you to be able to decide, okay, what our target is going to be by 2025, and if we're going to target a particular subpopulation to help drive that reduction. So the way All In is set up, it has three foundational pillars, equity, data and evidence, and collaboration. And then it has three solution pillars, housing and services, crisis response, and prevention. And that prevention pillar is very, very important. One of the big things that we heard from communities in regards to prior federal strategic plan, there really wasn't an emphasis on prevention. There wasn't much talked about in regards to prevention. And so we wanted to make sure that this plan really had a solution focus on prevention. We can do everything we need to do to get people out of homelessness and into housing, but if we don't turn off the faucet, then that just means people just come in as other people leave out. And so we really wanted to make sure that prevention was emphasized in this plan. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about the three foundational pillars first, and then I'll talk about the three solution pillars. And again, as I'm talking about these pillars and you're seeing the framework of the plan, start thinking about, okay, what about our local plan? How is our local plan developed? And what we're talking to communities about, some communities need to develop a plan because they never had one. Other communities need to look at their current plan and revise or update it. Some communities need to look at their plan and say, you know what? We're dealing with a local municipality. We're also dealing with more than one county. Maybe we need to have an overarching regional plan. And so we want communities to really think about their local plans and/or their regional plans, and begin to look at whether or not that plan needs to be revised or updated. So when we talk about the foundation pillars, number one, leading with equity. And again, as I mentioned earlier, racial equity is embedded throughout this plan. We want communities to look at their data, understand, do we have an overrepresentation of a particular population of color within our homeless system? But we want communities to take it a step further. We also want you to look at your outcomes. Who's getting into housing? And making sure that those outcomes are also equitable. And then we want to make sure that you're leading with equity in terms of inclusive decision-making. And when we talk about inclusive decision-making, we're talking about including people in the decision-making process who have lived experience. You can't do this work, you can't develop solutions and understand the causes if you don't involve people with the lived experience. And not just people who were formerly homeless, but people who are currently homeless. And when we talk about inclusive decision-making, one of the things that I often emphasize, that doesn't mean you hold a focus group of persons who are experiencing homelessness, you get their feedback, and then you take it back and you consider it. No, involve them in the actual decision-making processes. Involve them in the actual governance structure to make sure that that's inclusive. Why am I emphasizing this? If folks are familiar with the most recent continuum of care NOFO, as well as some other funding opportunities that recently came out of HUD, HUD released a supplemental funding for unsheltered homelessness, one of the key scoring criteria was whether or not you included persons with lived experience in your decision-making structure. I had an opportunity to review those NOFOs and was a part of the scoring, and I can tell you, that was one And I can tell you, that was one of the biggest scoring components of that NOFO. But it's a particular example of how, if the federal priority is saying inclusive decision-making of persons with lived experience, it's going to show up in the funding. And it's going to show up in the scoring. And the better you are aligned with that, the better you will score, all right? Using data and evidence, we want communities to understand that this has to be rooted in their local data, it has to be rooted in evidence. And then at the federal level, we're looking at what works. We're talking to communities about what's working. We're looking at the research to determine what's working because we really want this plan to be embedded in data and evidence. And then at the same time, we also want communities to understand, feel free to innovate. Feel free to look at your local data, look at your local system and say, hey, where can we push the button? Where can we create something new? We're always hearing about new things that communities are doing. That's part of the work that I do. Communities talk to me and say, hey, Joe, we want you to know about something new that we're doing and it's working. We take that back to our council. We take that back to our federal partners and say, hey, listen, this might be an area that needs to be funded in communities because they're really doing something innovative and it's working. So data and evidence is key. And then, of course, collaboration at all levels. The reason why this plan is called All In is because at the federal level, we've taken an all-of-government approach. It takes everyone to really get down and to really address this issue. When we talk about collaboration at all levels, it's not just the providers taking the burden upon themselves to collaborate, but we need that collaboration at the political level as well, at the level of the local government, at the level of the county. And it really takes an all-of-community approach. So if we're doing an all-of-government approach, I want you all to think about an all-of-community approach. It takes everyone. The education system, I'm glad to see law enforcement is here this morning. It takes the provider community. It takes the faith-based community. It takes the social services community that are providing the housing, that are providing the drug treatment. What about the local Department of Public Health and Behavioral Health? And I even heard that the healthcare system is here this morning. This is the type of collaboration that it really takes if we're going to develop a system, if locally you're going to develop a coordinated plan that involves all of the necessary entities. And this takes some work. And one of the things that I can say is that as a community, if you guys say, okay, Joe, how can we build our system better so that we're collaborating at all levels? How can we develop a better plan? HUD is here. HUD will provide your community with the technical assistance that is necessary to look at your system, to look at your local plan, and to understand how can we develop it better so that we have this collaboration at all levels? So leading with equity, using data and evidence, and collaborate at all levels. And I'll tell you this, the number one thing that I see in communities that are highly successful with developing a system, I'm based in Philly, born and raised in Philly, so I may be even a little biased towards Philly. Philly's the greatest city, we have the best food, et cetera, et cetera. So, but the one thing that I will say about Philadelphia, when the mayor got behind homelessness, Philly made significant progress. When the mayor got behind homelessness, the business community stepped up. You know, we have Wawa up. Do y'all have Wawa down here? Do you know what Wawa is? Okay, some of y'all know what Wawa is? Okay, all right. So we have Wawa back up there on the East Coast. Wawa, the convention center, the Chamber of Commerce, they came together because of the mayor's support for addressing this issue. And you know, want to know what they were able to do? They formed a collaboration to address unsheltered homelessness in the downtown business district, in the tourist area. They were able to reduce homelessness in that area by over fifty percent. And it was because they stepped up and they put dollars on the table. But the business community stepped up and did that because they had that political support. So we see in communities, when that political support is there, that all-of-community approach can really happen and folks can really make progress. And I can certainly talk to you more about that tomorrow at the smaller meeting to help you understand how Philadelphia and the business community really implemented that and how they were successful. So these are the three foundation pillars, leading with equity, using data and evidence, and collaborate at all levels. So when we talk about the solution pillars, scale up housing and supports. The way the federal strategic plan is set up, when you read the solution pillars and you read the foundation pillars, it's going to talk to you about what we're going to do at the federal level to promote those things. So one of the things that we're trying to do is maximize the amount of federal resources. One thing that I can say about Secretary Fudge, she's the current Secretary of the Department of Housing and Urban Development. She has really been a champion for how can we get more rental assistance? How can we get more vouchers out to communities? And communities have seen new allocation of vouchers, new allocations of rental assistance because she has really been a champion of that. The way things tend to work at the federal level, you know, we issue monies. If communities don't use all of that money, typically it goes right back to the Department of Treasury. She has really been a champion. Let us keep these dollars and let us put those dollars back out into the community. So we're really looking at how can we scale up housing and supports? And that housing and supports is key. One of the key components of the federal strategic plan that you'll see weave throughout it is housing first. Let's see hands, how many people have heard about housing first? All right, housing first is a very controversial topic, depending on the community that I'm in. But the thing that I want communities to understand, when we talk about housing first at the federal level, we're not talking about housing first in terms of taking someone off the street, putting them into housing, and then saying goodbye, you're housed. We can now count you and take you off of our list. No, we're talking about the housing along with the services that are necessary so that they can remain stably housed. The housing plus the drug treatment services. The housing plus the mental health services. So you're going to see housing first weave throughout the federal strategic plan because we want communities to understand that housing is a right. Housing is a human right. Housing isn't something that you earn based on good behavior. Housing isn't something that you have to come to deserve once you get your issues together. Housing is a basic human right. And so we're looking at the federal level, how can we get more resources to communities so that they can scale up their housing, so that persons can get housed? And even at the local level, as you're developing your plan, you can look at your local zoning plans, look at your permitting process, because those are components that can be controlled at the local level that can help reduce the cost of affordable housing development. And so we really want you to look at your community and say, okay, what can we even do at the local level to help scale up housing and supports? And then, of course, improve the homelessness response system. One of the key things here is that we want to work with communities to improve your homelessness crisis response system. One of the key things that we heard from communities is around coordinated entry in terms of understanding what does a good coordinated entry system look like? That is able to really assess people's needs and match them with the appropriate resources. And we understood at the federal level that we require communities to implement a coordinated entry system, and this was primarily done through the continuum of care. And we realized at the federal level, we gave you all as a COC a deadline to develop a coordinated entry, but we did it in typical federal fashion. We gave you a deadline but didn't give you a lot of resources. We gave you a deadline but didn't give you a lot of guidance. So one of the things that we wanted to do through this plan is really make a commitment to giving communities more resources and more guidance around how to develop an effective coordinated entry system. So you're going to begin to see that coming out of the federal level. And then, of course, there is preventing homelessness. And as I mentioned before, we wanted to make sure that there was a key emphasis on the prevention of homelessness. How can we determine, how can we assess those who are at risk of becoming homeless? And one of the things that I often try to explain with communities is the difference between what's called prevention and what's called diversion. When we talk about prevention, we're talking about giving that household what they need to stay in their housing if it's safe, so that they don't lose it. That's prevention, keeping them in their housing if it's safe so they don't lose it. Diversion, they've already lost the housing and they're knocking at the door of the homelessness response system. How can you divert them from coming through that door? So when we talk about preventing homelessness, we're really talking about better access to employment opportunities, better access to educational opportunities, and what we will do at the federal government to help you implement a prevention system that starts to turn off that faucet. So thinking about these three foundational pillars, lead with equity, use data and evidence, and collaborate at all levels, those are the foundational things that make for a solid system. And then when it comes down to solutions, scaling up housing and supports, improving your homelessness response system, and preventing homelessness. So that's the basic framework, the three foundational pillars and the three solution pillars. And again, when you read the actual plan and you can get into some of the details, start thinking about, okay, how do we need to look at our local plan and understand what changes we need in our local system so that we're aligned with these federal priorities? I can't emphasize this enough. When upcoming federal funding comes down the pike, that scoring criteria is going to be based on the priorities that you are seeing in the federal strategic plan. The better you are aligned, the higher you will score. The higher you score, the more money will come to your community. So how do we plan to implement All In? One of the things that we decided to do, we just didn't want to release this federal strategic plan and not give communities guidance in terms of how we're going to implement it. So we're going to be coming out with some supplemental implementation plans. We're going to be developing measurements and benchmarks that we want to be held accountable to. So when we come out with an implementation plan, we have the benchmarks of the outcomes that we want to achieve in that plan. We really want to be held accountable. And the way that we're going to do that is we're going to also release an annual performance plan. And the way that we want you to think about All In is different than prior federal strategic plans. Previous plans, we released it, the plan was the plan, and the plan was the plan for the next ten years until we released a new plan. We're looking at All In as an evolving document, as an evolving plan. So as we develop the implementation plans, we put out our annual performance measures. We're going to continue to get feedback from you all at the community, at the local level. And we're going to continue to revise All In as necessary based on what we're hearing and what that performance looks like. So that's that last bullet point, update the plan annually to reflect evolving metrics, inputs, and lessons. And so how will we measure our progress? These are just some of the key measurements that we're going to use, the overall size of the homeless population, people experiencing sheltered and unsheltered homelessness. We want to look at the racial disparities to see if we're seeing a decrease in the disproportionate representation of persons of color. We want to look at children and youth during the school year, working with the school district. And something that we're doing at the federal level is we're trying to work with the Department of Education to come up with ways to assist communities to be able to share data. And so it's very important that there's data sharing that is happening at the local level, particularly between the school district and the COC. The length of time homelessness, as well as returns to homelessness, those who become homeless for the first time, that's going to be one of our prevention measures. And then placement and retention in terms of those who exit homelessness as a result of street outreach. So these are just some of the outcomes that we're going to be using to measure our progress. So I've kind of been weaving this out through my presentation in terms of how can you take All In and use it locally? Again, look at your local plan. Do you need to develop a regional plan? What will that plan look like? How can we align that plan with these federal priorities so that our community can be positioned to get maximum funding from the federal government? One of the things that I often do, if you're not familiar with it, the state of Florida has its own interagency council on homelessness. And to be truthful, Florida has one of the strongest ICHs that we've seen. We often use Florida's ICH as a model. But we're encouraging that coordination to happen even at the state level. So that what you all are receiving from the state at the local level is being done around a coordinated plan. So we really want you to look at your local plan, look at your local data. When you talk about, okay, let's set a goal for twenty twenty-five, what would that goal look like? Where do we currently have resources? I was looking at your point in time count data and perhaps we'll talk more about that tomorrow, but I was seeing that significant drop in the number of homeless veterans, which I'm assuming is due to such resources as HUD VAS and Supportive Services for veterans and their families. But we want you to look at your local resources and say, okay, where can we make a significant impact and a significant reduction by twenty twenty-five? How can we develop or revise our plan so that it's reflective of these federal priorities? And this is the website where you can go to get the plan if you haven't had a chance to get it already. And when you go to our website, I encourage you, once you try to exit the website, you're going to get a pop-up. Sign up for the newsletter. That is the way that we communicate with you all. It gives you an understanding, lets you know what's coming down the pike in regards to the federal level. But again, I can't overemphasize the importance. Look at your local plan, look at your local system. Do we need to coordinate better so that we're not operating in silos? How do we develop this all-of-community approach so that we have an effective system for preventing and ending homelessness? And again, the better your system is aligned with these federal priorities in the federal strategic plan, the more your community will be positioned to get the maximum amount of funding at the federal level. So I'm encouraging you, use this energy, use this motivation to start looking at your plans. The fact that Mayor Reese called me, that was impressive. I don't get calls from mayors that say they're, you know, concerned about homelessness. That does not happen often. And so really use the political support that you have in your communities. And sometimes this is going to be a difficult conversation. It's going to be a difficult conversation about resources. It's going to be a difficult conversation about capacity. And that is something that we recognize at the federal level. Communities sometimes just don't have the capacity within their provider community. They just don't have the capacity. What can we do to help them increase that capacity? I want you all to get the maximum amount of funding and be best positioned to really get the dollars into your community to prevent and end homelessness. That is it for Joe Savage. It is my wake-up time, eleven-thirty. I thank you for your patience and thank you for coming out this morning. And please, feel free to take down my email address. That's the best way to get in contact with me. I'm the person, Joe, we got a question about this, Joe, we don't understand this. Please feel free to reach out to me and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Savage. And meetings adjourned.